This conference will now be recorded.
We're hitting on Jake?
Yeah.
Very, very bright.
I'm good. I'm hanging in there. I'll try to get my VP figured out. I'm getting there on that talk.
Before we get started tonight, if I could remind everybody when they're speaking to speaking to the microphones, that a way everybody is asking here. I've seen complaints about that. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Honorable Mayor Andrew Dawson. You hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalian City Council on this fourth day of March, part of the 2023-2024 session. Let's proceed with purpose and dedication to values that guide our city. This meeting is now called to order. First item on our agenda is prayer followed by pleasurable reasons. Chap. Mattson, you have the Lord's in prayer.
Would you please stand as able and join me in invocation. Dear Lord and Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance. The Sedalian City Council, the mayor, administrators, staff, and ward council meet to hear about, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of the city of Sedalian and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and dedication. We ask your protection for the first responders, police, fire, sheriff, EMTs, ambulance, hospital staffs, these peoples who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for so many thousands that fought and died to create and preserve for these 247 years. We ask your blessing and protection for our military and civilians, serving our country today, here and throughout the world, protecting our way of life from threats from out and more sadly, from within. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. And all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic and for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just as it is.
Roll off, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
August.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
List.
Here.
All right, next item on our agenda is approval of the previous session's minutes. We have a council meeting dated February 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion in the second?
Motion approved.
Next. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, the budget work session meeting minutes dated February 26th, 2024. Do I have a motion in the second?
Motion approved. Thanks.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have the report from special boards, commissions, and committees. We have the acceptance of the citizens' traffic advisory meeting minutes dated January 10th, 2024. Do I have a motion in the second?
Motion approved. Second.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have our roll call standing committees. Up first is finance administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
I have two items tonight, and the first one is presentation film show on our budget highlight.
Okay. Well, as you all recall, we, last Monday, we had our budget work session. And so, I have prepared a slide or a few slides here just to kind of summarize where we ended up at that last meeting. And going through the items that were ranked in your strategic planning, and for the general fund, there were 18 items that you were ranked in this quarter. Number one was license plate recognition, and then I just kind of put out there to the side. In green means that it was funded, in red means it was not funded, and then yellow, we did something different or alternate, something in the middle, let's see. So, the items one through seven were funded. The neighborhood 360 camera, the mobile software evidence collection, and that analytics, fire holistic theft, and MCI bags. The added fire staffing to go to 12 on duty. Now, that was funded with grants, and so, the revenues in there as well as the expenditures. The dangerous building demolition funding at the level of $100,000 was funded. The gunshot detection was funded. The fire training and preparedness officer is, was not funded. However, we did drop down and pick up as it was a smaller amount at 2.5,000, 2,500 for the senior center support. And then, the fire medical UTV vehicle tied for ninth was not funded. The retail recruitment consulting was funded at the $70,000. And I believe there was some question as to why we picked up that one when some above it were not funded. And that is my recommendation as part of the strategy for continued growth as opposed to just trying to cut our way to keep them within the amount that we have available. So, that's major balance, if you will. Animal control, added officer control, not funded. The charter legal. Part of city legal and consulting was not funded by above. 353 neighborhood rehabilitation seat money was not funded. The animal control added truck for the added animal control officers, since the animal control officer was not in there, we did not add that vehicle as well. Let's see. The Freddy, the fire truck, the code enforcement vehicle for added assistance was not funded, and the digital fine for fire headquarters was not funded. For transportation.
Can I interrupt you for just one second?
Sure.
Um, there is something that I would like to look at adding back into the previous section. I really thought about it, and the class A uniform for the fire department. I think that's pretty important for the department, just to look professional is very important. And three captains don't have those. And then, let's see, Chief Irwin, who is about 10 years old, and Daniel, who comes 2018. So, I would like to please make a motion to add that back in for the classy uniforms for $4,000, please.
How much was it?
$4,000 for five uniform.
I'll second that. Let's check how they found here.
It's line 68.
So, I have a motion in the second. Motion's on the floor. Any council discussion regarding the motion in second? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. It can be added back.
Thank you.
Okay, transportation. We have seven items that were ranked. The pavement management program was funded. The hand dump truck with snow pile and spreader for $350,000 was funded. Coming in at third was the mowing brush, skid, mowing and brush skid steer with the attachments. If you remember, we talked about that. There was also, there were basically two skid steers, two added or new skid steers were proposed. So, if you looked at at number seven and number three, we kind of combined those, and we did fund one skid steer and then also the attachments, the special attachments for the brush handling and the mowing. The mini excavator for demolition was not funded. The track excavator was not funded. The Bingo's stand on skid steer for mowing and basements was not funded. For the capital improvements program, we have 21 items that were ranked in your strategic planning session, and essentially, we got through, funded down through number seven. So, the fire station, that was funded, but it was funded with either grant funds or certificates of participation or debt, if you will. Fire engine, this is a prepaid with a three-year delivery, and I just got word that actually the fire engine that we paid for a year or so ago arrived Friday, but they're still putting the equipment on. So, it's amazing how this next three years managed to the fire truck, but this would allow us to order it, pay for it upfront, because we get a significant discount if we pay for it upfront, and so, that is in there, as well as the aerial fire truck or flat truck. The fire training center, also with grant funds for borrowing debt, if you will. The 32nd and limit lane additions. That's the cost share, the sidewalk and curb funding level at $500,000 dollars for street resurfacing individual projects. And we'll see where we funded about $925,000 of those projects. And you'll see on a slide here later which ones are included in that. State Fair Boulevard Main Roundabout was not funded. The sidewalk at State Fair, 50 Highway, Third Street to 65 was not funded. 16th and Winchester to Sacramento was not funded, and also tied for number 10, 16th Street Complete Street was not funded. Number 12, we did fund that at a greatly reduced level, $54,000, and that's really just payment for several of those, or retaining several of those. I think it's one block each direction on Ohio from Sixth Street to Main, I believe it's, if I remember the numbers, but that was 54,000, so we did squeeze that one in there. Monument Way Fighting signage, we did not fund. The sidewalk, 65 Highway 7 to Liberty Park Boulevard was not funded, the 65 Highway ramp at Main. Cost share was no doubt was not funded. 65 Highway, Sacramento, traffic light, just funded. The bikeway, M-Track Depot, King Depot was not funded. North Harding and Boozeville, Highway 50, Highway 50 to the airport improvements was not funded, and extensive pro energy drive to Oak Grove. And then, also tied for 19 was 50 Highway, Katy Trail Overpass, YB, cost share was no doubt. And finally, at 21, the deputy, downtown deputy flight purchase and change notes over to LED was not funded. As we mentioned, the number seven on your capital improvements was the funding level for resurfacing projects, and so, we ranked those separately so that we could get an idea of which ones you all felt were the most important. And essentially, we funded through number five, or your fifth highest, one through five of your highest ranking items, and then six through 11 were not funded. So, what is included is grants, 20th to 24th Street, grants, Main to 65 Highway, Confection 16th to 20th, engineer, lining the tower, Ingraham 16th to South, if I can spell, South 11, Emmett Broadway to Tower, and, I'm sorry, Emmett Broadway to Tower was not funded, and the rest of those were not funded. Other notable items, the public safety step increase of 2% was funded, and 2% COLA, I'm sorry, was funded. The other employees with COLA have 3%, and 1% satisfied for merit was funded. The fire lieutenant position, the fleet's four commander structure is funded. Contracted seasonal cemetery meeting is funded, the code enforcement certification, HR assistant certification, MML conference for council. The MML legislative conference for council is also funded. The clean title work was funded. The Pioneer Trails, we all voted to take that out, so it is now unfunded. Employee promotions and wellness fair was funded. Safety recognition program, you all voted to double that amount to take it up to $2,000 for that program. Know the forest subscription is funded. The fire hydrant testing and repair, AED replacements, fire new scene, white poles, the fire new hire gear, uniform, and training, which ties back to the adding the extra six employees was funded. The fire climate day uniforms, that you all just changed that, so now it is now funded. The fire duty codes is funded. Police SRT and DRD training, police two patrol vehicles, the police radio, three-hang Christmas lights, and the trust building were funded. The chief building official training was funded. Downtown structural engineer inspections was also funded. The cemetery backhoe replacement was not funded. Cemetery HVAC mini split was funded. The cemetery SUV for the office was not funded. Animal shelter retaining wall was funded. HR emergency exit door was funded. The city hall break area was unfunded. The annexed building roof and other repairs, we made the recommendation that we do not spend $75,000 on that building, instead of get it in. Fleet maintenance and pillow jack was funded. Fleet maintenance forced air gas furnace was funded. The EMA contract increase level, we funded that at the current level of spending under the current contract arrangement, but did not choose to fund the increased amount that they requested. Christmas tree sponsorship, you all voted again to take that out of the general fund, and there's $500 in the CCBT or the special business district fund. The Bloom and Tiger Festival sponsorship was funded. So, with all of that, we will incorporate any changes and then, as indicated by the consensus developed during this meeting. I do have the spreadsheet that we just went through, so if we want to go back through any items, we certainly can. We will have also the opportunity, if you all choose to do that, we can schedule another work session for next Monday, if you all desire. And then, ultimately, on the 18th, there will be a public meeting at the beginning of your 18th meeting for a, for public to provide any input as to what they would like to see changed in the budget. Council consideration for the adoption will happen after the public hearing, but then, if you all want, you can not, you can move that later or table that until all the other stuff. So, any items that you want to look at any further, and/or do you want to schedule a work, another work session?
Maybe we'll take that. The first question first is council, having motions as far as adjusting that spreadsheet that they'd like to put forward? Having heard none, the, does the council have any desire to have another session regarding the budget?
I don't think we really need one. I mean, we've all went over it. We asked questions. I mean, it's like three happy things.
The only question that I have is that we voted to fund the new fire station. Did we vote and decide where that new fire station is going to be?
I believe that was presented as they're rebuilding that in the same spot where Central is now, or about the same spot, I think Fifth Street or something like that. That was part of the strategic planning section, if I recall correctly.
So, with the earlier meeting that we had concerning where it was going to be built at, I thought that it was said that whenever we did a new one, it was going to be on the north end of town somewhere. So, that's not so now?
That's my understanding of what was presented by Irwin back when we was going through that, and was that?
I may have missed this.
Yeah, in the strategic plan. Yeah, but part of the original plan was this was to go into public parks and residential parks, and we were very bottom clear from the community, and they did not want that place. So, when they went back and relooked at it, they looked for some additional places to do that, and as they were looking for additional places, there's nothing really helps the one and a half mile radius much, if any, plus extension. We have learned that the majority of our, where the expansion is either practically has been going, usually south and, what, south and west. So, at some point, we argued that third station, but until that broke out, we are, we can't really justify the extra expense for staffing three stations for more coverage than it would give.
Okay.
Did I take that right? Correct?
I'll answer my question. Well, it's just that, as I said, when we were having the public meetings, it was said that we were going to, the vision was to build two, and one of those was to go north, and the other one was to go south. And now, we're not going to go either direction. We're going to stay where we are over on Hancock, and they all were, I thought we couldn't build in there. I thought there was ground issue or something, or is that something else they was thinking about?
Yeah, there's environment animals, you gotta save the two or a little bit, yeah, we'll have to address that.
Anybody else? None? And my next item is the approval for records destruction. It's a request from the finance department. Okay, I have a request for records destruction from the finance department. Do I have a motion in the second?
Hello.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Zola.
All right, thank you, Chairman Marshall. Up next, we have public works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We have three items tonight. The first item we have tonight is there's a recommendation of staff and our traffic advisory council due to the development that's happening along 32nd Street and Verndon in the increase of traffic. They're recommending a four-way stop sign at that intersection.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of West 32nd Street and Clarendon Road.
Bill number 2024-26. An ordinance establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of West 32nd Street and Clarendon Road.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2024-26. An ordinance establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of West 32nd Street and Clarendon Road.
Final passage?
Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
All those two.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
All in favor.
Second item I have tonight is an acceptance of a bid and agreement for a roof restoration of the city garage with Roof Restoration Solutions LLC, and the total amount is $63,832.
All right, let's see. Call for the reading of the ordinance approving and accepting the bid for this roof replacement.
Bill number 2024-27. An ordinance approving and accepting a bid and agreement for roof restoration of Public Works Garage.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2024-27. An ordinance approving and accepting the bid and agreement for roof restoration of Public Works Garage.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
Third item I have tonight is an agreement with the union specific and in connection with extending a sewer main to wireco, there's a need to cross under the union specific rules. The staff has negotiated an agreement to allow such crossings on payments to be $5,000 licensing fee.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the pipeline crossing agreement.
Bill number 2024-28. An ordinance authorizing the pipeline crossing agreement for sewer main extension to service wireco.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2024-28. An ordinance authorizing the pipeline crossing agreement for sewer main extension to service wireco.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor. And thank you, Chairman Oldham. Uh, next, we have public safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor. We have the two items. One is the resolution authorizing the entire department to apply for a 2024 Hero Fund First Responder Grant. Okay, call for the reading of the resolution authorizing the application of 83.
Resolution 2024-83. Resolution authorizing the Sedalian Fire Department to submit a 2024 Hero Fund First Responder grant application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the approval of this resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passed. Thank you, council. So, we have, we have a need for an ordinance authorizing grant applications for hazardous moving violations with the police department and DWI enforcement. Two, we have need for two ordinance. Okay, we have two ordinances in relation to this matter. Call for the reading of the first ordinance with regards to hazardous moving violations.
Bill number 2024-29. An ordinance authorizing the grant application for hazardous moving violations.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2024-29. An ordinance authorizing the grant application for hazardous moving violations.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
List.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor. And we have the second ordinance in relation to this matter, it's authorizing the grant application for DWI enforcement. Call for agreeing the ordinance.
Bill number 2024-30. An ordinance authorizing the grant application for DWI enforcement.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading of this bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2024-30. An ordinance authorizing the grant application for DWI enforcement.
Final passage?
Okay.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
List.
Yes.
All in favor. And before we move on in relation to those two ordinances, I have the authorization form for the grant. If I could have the council members hang around afterwards, you go ahead and sign that. I need your individual signature. All right, thank you, Chairman Oldham.
You're welcome.
Let's see, Chairwoman Foster? Sorry.
Oh, I have one.
Very good. Uh, let's see, another business, we have liquor licenses. Call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have four new licenses and one renewal tonight. New ones for Paige Share doing businesses for local staff, 700 South Ohio for Sunday sales. Eric Volker doing business with Volker's 1021 South Main for a special event. Haley Newton doing business at Sedalian Lions Club, the O Box 1085 for special event, March 16th, Hub Crawl, and Haley Newton doing business at Sedalian Lions Club, the O Box 1085 for picnic license. And then, a renewal for Chris Robinson doing business at Osage Gun and Pawn LLC, 116 West Main for package liquor.
Motion to approve and block?
Thank you.
Any council discussion regarding the motion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Have you been, Ms. Lady's item from the city council or city minister? Thank you all for all your work on, on attention to the budget. Take it. Anybody else? All right, move along. Now, we'll move on to the Good and Welfare section. Ladies and gentlemen, we now arrive at the Good and Welfare section of our agenda. This is a unique opportunity for residents of our beloved city to directly address their city council. we'll be allotted three minutes to present their statement. Please note, this is not a session for dialogue or debate with the council, or is it a question and answer session? It is a time for you to make your voice heard, for us to listen, and your statements to be entered in the public record. We ask that all remarks be kept respectful and pertinent to the community's matters. Your input is invaluable to the continuous efforts to make Sedalia a better place for all. Thank you for your participation, and again, for helping maintain the form of this process. So if anybody would like to, go ahead and step along up. Yeah, pretty much.
My name is Becca Lustrada, 608 West Third. I was wondering if I could ask you all a question. During the Good and Welfare, that's the time when we, the citizens get to speak, I'm sure you know that. I was wondering if there's any way you could put more of what the person says in the agenda minutes, so people can see who speaks what they're thinking. And, gonna switch gears here. I remember when the Washington Avenue VIDOC was built, and, Bob, you remember, we had a real rough time getting that passed, giving it up. We all worked hard, and we were very proud of that VIDOC. And I remember Public Works stating the VIDOC could have no salt on it, and it had to be covered with sand during the winter time, during the icy time. So I would ask that you all would consider that, because from what I have seen, I've gone and looked at it, what I've seen, it looks like salt has deteriorated the beams. So to present that, you all can take a look at it and see what you think. And I would like to thank the Sedalia Community Helping Hands group that are helping people that need repairs done on their homes, and I hope that they can get more volunteers and more binders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Hello, David Gibson, 1640 Hajar Park Drive. Do you want to address, I think many of you are a bit, in some of the meetings past, the sound system out in the audience hasn't been that good, and if you guys could maybe just look into that, especially we have a few more in the room, it's just really tough to hear some of you, and I could just maybe help look a look at it. One other thing is, Councilman August, I agree with you, I grew up on the north side, I grew up at 319 North Stewart, so I know what, how important fire coverage is, or exactly what the VIDOC being out right now, I mean, we closed a lot of crossings like there in my old neighborhood over the past years, and, you know, I think it's invited look at. I know you guys got plans where it goes, but I think at some point, you know, you've got to look at the north side, you know, my grandma lived there, I lived there, so I just don't want to see the north side get left out as we move and progress. And I understand growth and all the things you're looking at, but I don't think we can forget our north side, and their safety is as important as anyone else's. The other thing is, I would urge the council to consider putting the meetings live on Facebook. I do it on my personal stream, because so many people want to see it. It's the easiest way for everybody to look at it. I don't know a lot of security risk with that, and I think the citizens would really appreciate, you know, to see what's going on in council meetings by doing that. And then just one more thing, look where it goes, and maybe, I know this isn't the time you guys can talk to me, but it's maybe later, or some could point me in the right direction. Who's paying for the four extension at the Wireco? And I know we're paying for the $5,000 under the tracks, and I understand that importance of doing that, but, you know, it's just curious, who's paying for that? So with that, thank you for, for honest to speak.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Hi, my name's Larry Howes. You know, I got a house over on the north side over here I'm trying to fix up, and we went and got a permit, and then they came out, tripped the water line out, so we didn't know nothing about, we're supposed to be tearing it down, but anyhow, I don't know, I'm trying to get it saved, so I can fix it. I'll fix it real quick. It's a 213 West, 213 West Morgan. I've been over and cleaned the yard all up, I've been working on it for a week. So, trying to get some more time so I can get, we already got the permit to fix it with, but we didn't know they were going to try and tear it down. And my nephew here, he's been, you know, did, I talked to Tina, and she said that I need to bring something, show them that, that I got something to do with the house, which I didn't take care of for 20, about 20 years, I'm sure. I've been paying taxes on it, and I'm just trying to do something with it, so I'm going to turn it over to my nephew, which he's does construction, so he's got a crew, he fixes that real quick, if y'all give it a little more time.
I'll speak with you out in the hall after the meeting. Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Chairman. All right, anybody else? All right, have you heard none? We will go ahead, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, or close the session?
To adjourn.
No closing.
Okay.
adjourn.
Second.
Any council discussion? Any adjourned, we need to adjourn.
Of course, we got it written right now. We're down, we're down.
I can't wait till you have the [inaudible].
Oh, I was, I was too focused on what.